That and a lot of information for the council to consider. I would, I would hope that we'd get additional input. I know HBA members are here, and if anyone would like to come up and comment on what we've kind of been presented, what at this time, or wait for questions from the council, we can do that as well. But I think there, it's a great start. There's still a lot of work to be done because it is a culture change from what we've been doing over the last two decades here in our residential development. So I think, you know, it's going to take some further discussion and input from the council as well. So, Mr. Mills.
One, one quick question. I mean, I like, I'm a guy, I like porches. I mean, if you're driven by my house, you know, I've got a big porch. But I like porches. I like some of the things, the anti-monotony on the driveways and stuff. My only question or concern, I heard many times through this presentation about making things inviting for the neighbors and the people walking by. We're not looking at shortening our setbacks for the houses to where we're going to put them right up closer to the sidewalks, are we?
The intent of this wouldn't really address any of the setbacks. The, the one thing that would, with the amendment, we would have to address would be a separate section of our code that deals with where porches can be built. Porches sometimes have a little more flexibility and encroaching past a build line. So to support some of the things in here, we would have to look at that code section and make those adjustments so that it becomes permissible.
And certainly, one of the things that we had heard individually from time to time was that, and Eastbrook being one of the examples, where you have the exact same setback time after time after time after time, and it makes it look a little bit more uninviting, not the same streetscape. Obviously, at the plat level, we're taking care of that by having different sized lots.
I just, something, mentioned something about New Longview, and I know that one section over there, they got very small front yards, and they've got the garages in the back of the house and things like that. And I just, I mean, I think the anti-monotony is good, but I don't know that Raymore's for having the houses 15 feet from the sidewalk and the garages in the back of the houses probably right now, so.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Baker.
I guess, I got a few things on that. The setback would concern me that if we widen the, the yard, I would assume a developer's going to take advantage of that and say, I'm going to build a wider house if I have a seven and a half foot offset or a five foot offset, side of the house offset. You, you have a wider yard, they're probably going to build a wider house, I would think, at that point, right? And we still, and that would really only imply, I think, when we get to the five foot offset, that's what most of the citizens, at least in Ward 1, have concerns about.
Yeah, I mean, the, the setbacks would remain what they are in today's code. We wouldn't be proposing to change any of that. Builder could, you know, use up that, the entirety of that buildable envelope if they, if they chose.
And then, obviously, developers, I mean, we've seen not so much in Raymore, but in Belton, I know they've seen a lot of the developments that are the cookie cutter, probably cheaper for developers to build because there's little option and they can order stuff and it's, hey, we need this for all the homes. Would we, like, on this case here, timeframe and whatever input we have, I think we've had a lot of input already to this point, I would assume, but would this hold up if we had a developer come in in a month from now and say, hey, I've got 500 homes, I want to build like that? Would we have any ability to say, we're in the middle of a, a update to our UDC, this may not be passed right now until we've, my, my fear is that someone's going to know we're going to change that, and that may expedite a development in Raymore.
Some of what we, because we've had, you know, we talked about this initially in February, and got the direction from the council to proceed forward with researching it. We, staff has had some conversations with folks that are interested in new subdivisions, and what we've been telling them is, you know, making them aware of what the, what the meeting was in February. You know, we had a previous draft of this information, and we kind of pivoted kind of halfway through. We were sharing that work with folks to kind of let them know, this is where the council's asking us to go, understanding that, that, that isn't adopted yet, but at the council level, that very well could be part of the discussion if and when, you know, an application made it to you all. You know, we've had some discussions on, you know, if this does get adopted, you know, when does it go into effect? Because obviously, we have some subdivisions that are platted already that folks are building on, whether it's retroactive to a plat. I think we still have some of those discussions to have. But builders have been somewhat receptive to the understanding that the council's asking staff to, to look at some code amendments. We really haven't seen like a rush for development at this point, at least, at least up until now.
And then my last question, maybe more for Mr. Zerbit, if we have a development being built, I mean, I like the concept of somewhat, this is a custom, like, like Creekmore's all custom home builds in there. So they all, people pick what they want and all that in, in their home. If we have a subdivision, someone's moving in, they say, I want to buy that lot, and I want to make, I want this home to be built, and then all of a sudden, well, I like my neighbor's porch, I'd like the same thing on my property. I mean, per an updated UDC, they would be prevented. I mean, at that point, a builder or buyer of a home would be somewhat limited in their choices because now that the UDC will control that more so than a consumer of a new subdivision, correct?
All of them would still be open to obtaining variances, and I would anticipate speculation at this point, but you don't know how many other porches would have been on that location at that particular time. So I think it's probably too much to speculate on it, but more importantly, they can always request through staff to have that ability to build the porch across the street if they were so inclined, and staff would impose the code as well as any potential variance options they'd have.
And, and we've also, the way we try to set this up is to really maximize the flexibility on both sides of the spectrum. So what we were just talking about is even, you know, the same porch, but different materials would be something to get around that, that requirement. You know, last case scenario, if they want the exact same porch, there's always the variance. We don't like to use that as the first option. So that was some of the flexibility that we tried to put in this proposal.
Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. A lot of good information, and I would take, my question is, this would take into account, some of these developments are like, kind of designed for first-time home builders, and then you have various levels of folks. These would not hinder any of that kind of development. I mean, Mr. Baker talks about 500 homes, we'd love to have that problem. But my other question is, when we do a PUD, sometimes can we add things in there to make that neighborhood look a certain way? Is that, do we have some variance in that?
It, it wouldn't necessarily call it a variance. You know, we, we would be intending to put this in the code as a minimum, meaning any, any resident, any residential subdivision at a minimum has to meet these requirements. The intent of a P district or a PUD is to go above and beyond this minimum. And the intent of why we really focused on the porches and the entry features was really for what you mentioned on, we don't really want to control the type of home that's getting built, smaller homes for first-time home buyers or for, you know, older folks that are trying to downsize. And so the intent was, you can still build those things, you just have to pay a lot more attention to the front facade that faces the street, and you'll have to have, you know, one of these entry features kind of built into the home. But the intent would be, this would be kind of the minimum standard.
Just minimum.
Right.
Right. And my next comment would is, would be, if, if you think our setbacks are not enough or whatever, I would invite the council to go to Lake Lotawanna and drive around those neighborhoods, if you want to see houses on top of houses, and I will tell you, that works out there, so.
Anyone else have anything? We, so it was the council's invitation to bring members of HBA here. I, I'd like to hear from your perspective, please, about any concerns or advantages that may have been voiced by builders or by your association with this kind of code change.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Will Ruder. I'm the Executive Vice President at the Home Builders Association of Greater Kansas City. We have had a number of these discussions with municipalities around the metropolitan area. Just as a matter of function, our Home Builders Association covers 69 different jurisdictions that issue single-family permits. So we've seen it all, as far as what people are considering. With regards to architectural and design features related to trying to introduce or either introduce variety or prevent a community from becoming a little bit too monotonous, one of the areas of caution that we do put out there is that while certainly not the intent, never the intent, these do have exclusionary results sometimes related to access for different rungs of the socioeconomic ladder from being able to, to access housing. Obviously, there are different business models related to the home building and development industry. For a point of context, in 2005, there were 670 builder members of my association. Today, there are 260. The Great Recession of '08 and '09 is not a scabbed-over wound, it is very much still open and felt within the industry. Ours is one that truly never recovered. The rest of the United States recovered to about 72% of its pre-recession permitting activity. Kansas City recovered, our metro recovered to about 51%. We're building half as many homes today on balance that we were many, many years ago, 15, 20 years ago. So when we introduce different requirements as to what neighborhoods, what homes look like, it does narrow the ability for what economies of scope and scale that are available to the most highly fragmented contractor market in the United States. That is our market. Our market is dominated by local home builders. Ours, prior to December of 2023, our metro was the largest residential construction market in the country that was not served by a top 50 nationally-ranked builder in terms of volume. So the average number of homes built by a member of my association is between 12 and 15 homes a year. So when these types of things are brought in, the economies of scope and scale not being readily available, it does term home, turn home building into a much more custom lot-by-lot market, where those abilities to at least replicate, if not next door to one another, at least within the same vicinity, is, is somewhat muted. So just a, a general word of caution, that while certainly well-intentioned and understood, and certainly well within the purview of a governing body to determine the, the future housing aesthetics within their community, that given the economics of home building today, it does introduce some, some, some very interesting dynamics. Just to give you an idea, when we, we start messing with development standards, lot sizes, setbacks, the, the lot price is typically between 18 and 22% of the overall purchase price of a home that a consumer sees. So just think, whatever modifications that are made relative to the fixed cost related to lot development, 5X that, and you're going to get a pretty good idea of the minimum dollar amount of a home minus finishes that you're going to be able to put on that lot. So a craftsman home built in the 1920s certainly had a lot of, of beautiful architectural features, probably on a $1,000 lot thing, probably sold for $25,000, and it's certainly appreciated since then. Today, the average lot price in, say, Johnson County across the state line is $140,000, which is why Johnson County sees mostly $700,000 houses. The more, the, the further away you get from the, kind of the 435 corridor, you start to see those, those prices go down from a lot standpoint, but your fixed costs related to development are, those, those, you just can't do anything about it. Utilities, the streets, the curb, guttering, sewer, all of those types of things, stormwater mitigation. And so when we then look at the lot price, and we, then we have to layer on all of the other requirements relative to the building code, the market conditions related to what the construction loan, what the terms of that are, and then the requirements to build from an architecture standpoint, you're, you're adding on these, these, these costs in an incremental way, and they do add up. So that just kind of gives you a perspective of where the conversation is within my organization. We're not saying that rules are bad, certainly not. We are much, very much in favor of clear and consistent rules that aids with the compliance and certainly aids in the enforcement, and you don't get into that kind of arbitrage that extends construction timelines, because that is the greatest enemy of home building today, is, is time. And so when we're looking at opportunities to advance speed to market, clear, consistent, and understood rules are very much appreciated, helpful, because at the end of the day, whether rules are good or rules are bad, at least they're stable, so that way you can plan and make business decisions associated with it. So if there are any questions or specifics or perspectives related to the market, I'm happy to do my best to answer them here.
Well, I had a question. You say you've worked with other municipalities, so those that have adopted some more specific guidelines, like what we've been talking about this evening, have you, is there a, is there percentage per square foot cost related to what it would fix cost for an actual home when they're trying to design and build it? Do, do these types of design specifications create a more costly environment for the, for the builder and the home buyer?
They do, they do affect the overall costs of, of the builder, which ultimately do get passed on to the, the home buyer. Just for perspective, builders in the Kansas City metro are in the bottom 10% of profit margin within the entire country. You make less building here than you do most other places, and it's because of, of the fragmentation of the market, building fewer homes. The only thing they have to do really is compete on price, and it's one of the things that has been a bit of a moat around our metro from those larger players that are, you know, maybe have a, more of a shareholder focus than an end-user focus. So what we see in, in other markets that have higher architectural features or requirements is larger, more expensive homes and multifamily. It does narrow the ability to kind of serve that smaller, single-family element, because the, the economics of today kind of pencil those out. So you either build larger homes on larger lots, or you try to get a rezoning to build something that is multifamily, mostly four units or above typically, not really your, your tries or your quads. It's usually if you're, you're going from single-family detached, to single-family attached, to a, maybe a twin villa or duplex product, and then you start stacking them up. So we have seen that in some of the other markets that have features like this, is large, beautiful homes, and then large apartment complexes.
Well, we, I mean, over there at State Line and 135th, you've seen a lot of that going on right now, yeah. Did you have something, Jim?
Thanks, sir. At the beginning of the conversation, you talked about the limiting aspect associate economically. Have you seen any legal challenges associated with that, associated with any limitations that are put on by these sorts of standards?
There is a growing, I think, appetite by some to challenge standards that exceed the going, going towards life safety issues, requirements above and beyond something that will just provide for a safe domicile related to fire codes and, and things like that. There are a number of states that have preempted local jurisdictions from taking measures that will deal with architecture, Texas, Arkansas, Tennessee, North and South Carolina. I, I don't know exactly how their state law is written, but it, those, those state laws, from my understanding, were pursued to address the, essentially the prohibition of the use of materials that are still code compliant. So say you've got a code-compliant building material that would, within the, the ICC family of codes, qualify, however, there's a local stipulation that that use, that, that material is not allowed to be used, that state law would not allow for that prohibition of that material in that particular case. So that, that obviously is not the case in the state of Missouri or the state of Kansas, but it is increasingly being used as a tool in other state legislatures.
Thank you.
Interesting. Okay. Mr. Mills?
Not, not be an argumentative, but just kind of mentioning, and I've been recently, like, looking at a lot of different plans for, like, smaller houses, or like, put a pool and have like a poolhouse, and, you know, and you still have kitchen and stuff in there. And I have been amazed at some of these smaller homes that I know the home itself, yes, only $25,000 to $80,000, where the cost is, it's got to put in a foundation, the plumbing, the sewer, and all that adds up. But I have been really amazed and impressed with how they've made them look, the different porches, some of them have really neat porches, some of them have different offsets, different roof lines, things like that. They have really stepped the game up, and I guess those are more manufactured than a home builder house. But it would seem like if they could do that with a 900 or 1,500 or 1,800 square-foot house and make them look really inviting, how they've done some of that, I would think it wouldn't be all that difficult for us to do the same thing with a smaller square-footage house, as long as you're not going crazy with what type of materials they have to use, but more architectural design. I think it, you know, I could see where you say, like, if everything has to be this certain kind of stone or this certain kind of brick, that poses a problem, but if it's more a design versus that, I think it could still make affordable housing.
Yes, and, and certainly on the, on the modular, you know, the, the term that the, the industry is currently using for that is structurally insulated panels, which does provide for a kind of climate-controlled manufacturing process for wall components. You know, there's a 60% vacancy rate in framing crews across the Midwest right now, so stick building housing is increasingly difficult to accomplish. So the use of, of modular wall framing systems is certainly something that can help on the, the time as well as the labor aspect. An added cost of that, or an added benefit of that is that it does reduce work, work site waste. So less construction materials being wasted on the site, which then obviously have to be hauled away. One of the challenges that we've had with the introduction of more modular construction in Kansas City is proximity to the manufacturing sites. They're, they're primarily on, on the coasts right now. There is some element, you know, elements coming to the Midwest. They're still kind of in their nation stages, but I do think that the appetite for that is increasing, if for no other reason than the supply of labor just isn't what it once was.
Mr. Omen?
Great presentation, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Can you give us a ballpark figure of the average and median prices for homes here in the Kansas City market at the current time?
Yeah, so the average new home construction price today is about $479,000. Five years ago, it was $372,000. So what we've experienced is a historic increase in the cost of materials, certainly as we've come out of the pandemic. What was once an exercise where perhaps a builder would get their letter from their supplier that says, hey, this is what the increase is going to be indexed for inflation and delivery costs, you know, 10% every January, but then you could plan for that the whole year. That 10% letter's coming every other week now, on, on every single thing on the cost sheet. So it's been, it's been hard to mitigate. So, you know, my, my, I grew up in a little town in Western Kansas. My dad owns a gas station and garage. When you saw, when, I remember as a kid, when I saw for the first time, gas go above $1.99 a gallon, and the pumps didn't have a "2" on it, because it was still the analog thing on it. And my dad was not only concerned about what that was going to do to his customers, but when, when the prices go up like that, it meant that he was basically just paying for the electricity to turn the pumps on. There was no margin in that. So even though, you know, the average new home sales price is flirting with half a million dollars, profit margins are lower than they were pre-pandemic.
Interesting. All right.
Of course. Thank you, thank you for the invitation, and do have to make certain that I, I compliment staff on the clear and consistent communication throughout this process. This was not by any means an ambush, and I can't say that of all of your neighboring communities, and so have to, have to compliment on staff saying, this is the directive we've been given by our governing body, and this is kind of what we're thinking. What do you guys think of this? And so our appreciation regardless of what the final outcome is for the engagement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So David, I know you're kind of looking for a direction from the council from this evening's discussion. Are there areas that you still like a little more direction on, or are you getting a feel for how this body wants us to proceed with this? Are we kind of waiting to see what maybe planning and zoning or more builder input might be with regard to the direction forward?
So I think our feedback tonight was probably twofold. The first being, just did we get the content right of what we're trying to put into the code? If there were areas that you wanted staff to do more research, or new research, or different things that you all might have thought of. So if we're okay with the content, that I think staff's, you know, prepared to polish up the actual code language, put it into a format that we'd be presenting it to you all here in the next couple of months. And then the second half of that would be just the, the process that the council would like us to go through. As I mentioned, the, the standard process for a UDC would be, our next step would be to advertise the hearing with planning and zoning, and get, you know, have the hearing and get the commission's feedback, maybe make some adjustments based on how that goes, and then proceed forward to the council with a hearing there as well. So if there's a consensus on both of those things, then Mr. McCumber and I are prepared to start that process here probably in the next week or two, depending on what those deadlines are to get things sent out appropriately.
Okay. Did you have something?
If I could make a suggestion, of course, everybody says they don't want to know how the sausage is made. In this case, I don't think it's too complex. Everybody's going to have to know how the sausage is made. Might be a good idea to have not a public hearing as a next step, but invite the builders in to give them this exact same presentation, and actually hear from the builders on whether we, we know some of the things we're going to hear. It's going to cost more, obviously, but actually hear from them, here is why this is going to be too much of a challenge. Or is it just going to be, because they do it every day?
Right.
So we hear from all of them, come back with those comments again to the council with a first draft of how this would look in the code. This is telling the story, but it's not the code.
Right.
So maybe with a first draft of that and the things that they had to say, then start the process of, with the council of actually changing or getting input from the council on the actual code language, and what that really looks like in black and white. Then next step would be PMZ with the public hearings. Maybe even ahead of the public hearings, having a good neighbor meeting just on this, so people can kind of see the slideboards, kind of like what MoDOT does before something.
My only comment, and I don't have a problem with that, I think we just need to get on it, because I think it, the, if we do something like this, which I think is probably a good thing to do, we probably need to have it in place as close to the first of the year as possible, or January, February, because the builders are usually starting to ramp up come spring, and they need to be able to start planning, budgeting, preparing, designing, I mean, getting that stuff ahead of time. So I think it's something that we really probably need, if we're going to do that, really kind of put the, the thing to where we've got most of that done by the end of the year.
I do like the meeting with the, the idea of meeting with the builders to get their input on it as well, yeah. So that might be, we might add a few more meetings to the process here of what other UDC codes might, or code changes might be, but I think it's, it's worth the effort, because it's, it's a big lift.
And it is, just by virtue of the advertisement times that are in statute, I can say that by the end of the year would be impossible. It, we could, if we get on it, we can have it done in the winter before they're doing those plans, and we can let them know, conversation with the council about, we're not going to approve anything, which has kind of been our informal direction from the council. Anybody who's come in, we've told them, you're going to need to hold off on this, and from their standpoint, they've been amenable to that because they don't want to be halfway through a process, have the rules change on them for what they're handing their builders now. You know, they can be bringing the plat in this way, but now what the builders are going to see isn't going to allow that, so all that has to vary.
If we don't have it formally approved, if we're far enough If we don't have it formally approved, if we're far enough along with their input, they can at least start planning for it. That's my main thing, is I, I want to be able to have plenty of time to plan for it.
Good point. Anyone else have any input? Mr. Omen?
Yeah, I think it's an excellent idea to have some builders, and I think this is a great starter piece from you, sir. Well, well done, but I'd like to hear the next step, which would be individual builders and their input as to additional costs and other barriers that might come out of this, should we implement it as is, or segments that might cause problems for them, if any, and what they feel that's going to do to market trends and things like that.
Sure. Mike? Sonia?
I would just say, I agree with what Jay said. I think the input from the builders is going to be important. If we hear from them that, oh, if you do this, I'm not building in Raymore anymore, or if we have to put the, make the houses this much more expensive, we're, there's no market for that, I think those are some of the important things that, that we need to hear from, from them. I don't want Raymore to be the city where nobody wants to build anymore. I think that would not be good for us. And it sounds like staff's, to Mr. Mills' comment, it sounds like staff is already on the communication. They're already telling people, we're looking at this, you need to consider this, so anyone who's looking at building here is getting the information, and they are able to plan. I would be more worried about rushing to push it through without getting input from the, the people we need to hear from. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Baker?
You had opened up saying that you had looked at other cities. Isn't it true, like, Peculiar, Harrisonville, Belton, they all have anti-monotony things in their planning currently, right?
They do. Theirs is, most of those cities are written a little more, what we will now call more traditional. We had a few conversations with those communities where, and a consultant that has written some of those codes, where those cities just aren't experiencing what they thought they would get with that. And so that's why we kind of took a step back and, you know, focused on the elements of the house, but some, several cities around the metro do have these in their code.
All right. You good?
Yeah, we will proceed with scheduling a more of an open house type meeting with the builders, and then we'll report back to the council following that.
Okay. Anything else? If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item, which is our budget, and we've been talking about that. Do you have anything, Mr. Fearborn, you wish to share to open up the discussion this evening?
Thank you, sir. Yes. Yes, I do. We just have to get to it. So do you want to address some of the leftovers from the last budget meeting? We always seem to have some. Do you want to let the council know ahead of time? We have managed to secure and lock in Friday, July 3rd as the date for our fireworks. I am not changing my recommendation to the council on the 110 that you don't spend, but you don't reserve. I still think that number is going to be a good number for everything associated with the 250th. The, the mayor and I, and the entire internal economic development team will be meeting with Mr. Good this week during our normal internal economic development team meeting, and will be discussing the, the initial with him as far as signage on his property, with the understanding the council as a whole would like to see a total plan if we move forward with any sort of a signage thing. Also, interestingly enough, we have, we think we have found, I had told the council we're going to be bringing to you sometime before spring, a new mowing plan. There is the possibility that sometime after the beginning of the year, I may be coming to you with a budget amendment. You know how much I love budget amendments, right after we've passed the budget. There may be a machine that does this, and we're actually going to have it demoed for us in the next couple of weeks. Kind of a mixture of weed cutter and street sweeper. And it looked pretty rugged in the videos, came with some good recommendations. I still don't have a price. The recommendation may be for one year, it's actually pretty cheap to rent it. If you consider $3,000 a week cheap, that is actually fairly cheap for that type of equipment, believe it or not. And if we're doing that three times a year and increasing the roadside mowing, it was just, it was really interesting, kind of fell into our lap. Good research on Public Works Park.
What kind of linear footage can you get done in a week with one week's rent? I mean, I'm just kind of curious. If you put a person in that vehicle...
I, I'm going to tell you, sir, we, I don't have that yet, and a lot of it's going to depend on who's driving it.
Sure.
Twenty-four seven.
That's right.
It's going to be public works workers gone wild.
There you go. That's funny.
That, when you say that, and the reason I was laughing before it was even over is the conversation in the engineering meeting about it, we actually did talk about that. And it really does kind of depend on the driver.
Well, this is, and so while this is not the last work session meeting on the budget, it's getting close because we're going to be proposing the budget's first read coming up.
That's correct, sir.
So if, for a recap purposes, do you want to, do you want her to flash it up there and, and we cover that again?
It certainly, it could certainly be a line item, sir, but it can also be a budget amendment.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the budget itself. I know you can, you can, we'll let you work that out, okay, when you know more about it.
Thanks, sir.
I'm talking about where we're at right now with the input that was given by council members previously.
From last week, yeah. Let's go ahead and just take a look at it.
And the week before.
I see what you're talking about.
There've been a couple of...
Now we're really going to put her on the spot here.
Give us a status on that.
Everybody ready to?
It's up on your iPad.
Maybe one last time revisit the yellow screen here?
It should be on their screens now.
Oh, perfect.
It's up? Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay.
You just have to scroll through.
Yeah, you're going to have to scroll for us if it's, if you're controlling it there.
So...
Okay, right there.
So as you see, when we had the 500,000, the council reserved another 110 there for the 250th, which meant after the comfort level, we had 167, 703. You see the 40,000 on the, the amphitheater performances. You see the 3,500 for the holiday lighting at the rack. You see the two pitching mounds and the pitching machine, 4,700. You see the two rolling bleachers for the rack at 8,000.
Yeah?
Yes. You see the, the replacement of the DGI drone at 17,000.
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen, the next line down, 17.
The trench and manhole safety equipment at 17,000, and the payment kiosk at 15,000, leaving available 61,503 in the general fund.
Okay.
As you can see, if you, Ms. Williams, if you would scroll to the side, thank you very much. So if you could go all the way to the enterprise fund, there is still available 2,293 in the enterprise fund, and that's available fund balance.
Okay.
So some could be, some of those things, after discussion, may go over into the enterprise fund, especially like the trenching items that could legitimately be taken out of there. But right now, the general fund, here is where we're at. We still have that comfort level over and above my comfort level of 61,000.
Couldn't the kiosk go into enterprise fund too, since it's doing mainly utility bills and stuff?
If we take it out of, it could. I'll put that simple. Do not know what the ongoing costs of the kiosks are going to be, but one way or the other, we are, because we have the enterprise transfer into the general fund every single year, one way or the other, we could certainly have an impact there.
And where would, apparently I wasn't around for that discussion. Where would the kiosk be placed?
Possibly in the vestibule out here with a different arrangement on the locking at the front doors.
So I was curious if it was a lobby or the vestibule that might be actually accessible?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. All right. Everybody good with where we're at? Yeah. Mr. Baker?
Just one general question, and hopefully this has already been budgeted, but the, the trail south of Foxridge Drive to North Cass, the one that we haven't touched yet, is that already been budgeted and funded?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and everybody kind of good where we're at? All right. Sounds good. Well, then, after that recap, if there's no further questions, we'll go to the other, as we generally like to do. Is there anything else to come before?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Tonight? Anybody else have anything? No executive session?
I think Tom had like about two hours worth of dialogue tonight, right? He wanted to talk about...
No executive sessions, sir.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and adjourn, and thank you, everybody, for your participation this evening.